Yes, I am here.
All right. And I believe Councilmember Orozco is with us. All right, so with that, we're going to call to order the April 29th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We are meeting tonight pursuant to Governor's Executive Order N dash 29 dash 20 pursuant to which members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff participating in this meeting via teleconference. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public have been asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or on WAVE Cable Channel 20 and to submit comments in writing by 6:00 PM on the meeting data today, April 29th. To submit a comment in writing, please email clerk@cityofwestacramento.org and write "public comment" in the "subject" line. When we get to the agenda items on which public comment is received, the city clerk will display the names of those individuals who or organizations who have submitted public comment. And also every member of the council has been provided a copy of the complete comments. And in addition, on the city's website, along with the video link, is a PDF file that includes every single one of the public comments in their entirety and their complete text. And there's no limitation on length or three minutes under this format. And so members of the public can see all of the comments at their leisure, including during the meeting. Tonight is one of our meetings focused on COVID-19. The council has been holding two meetings a month on its full range of business with the remainder focusing on COVID-19, and this is one of the latter. We have asked our staff to attend a lot more council meetings for longer periods of time in addition to the work that they're doing on emergency operations and on COVID planning. And so we've been working, City Manager, the Mayor Protem and I have been working on a continuous basis to try to focus our meetings, these weekly meetings in a way that will provide the most value to our organizational priorities on the response and meeting that needs of the public and supporting the work of our staff. And so tonight, when we get to item 1B, we're going to ask that for these COVID-19 focused meetings, that members of the council, when we get to council reports under item 1B, that we're solely reporting on those assignments that are listed on the agenda. So rather than the full range of events and activities and other meetings that we might be attending, those are certainly appropriate for our regular meetings. But for these meetings that we focus on those assignments that are noted here on the agenda, if there are any that are missed, that are the official assignments by the council to each of us, please let the city clerk know. But we're going to, for these meetings, focus item 1B solely for that purpose. We're also not going to be taking up item 1C, which is council appointments to boards and commissions during these special COVID-19 focused meetings. So and the intention here is to make sure that we're able to stay focused on our business and also that we're not asking our staff or members of the public to stay for extended periods of time when we're meeting on a much more frequent basis than we would typically in the non-emergency situation. So with that, we all turn out item 1A, which is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. Madam Clerk, have we received any public comments on item 1A?
No, only item 3.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, then we'll proceed to item 1B. Are there reports from the official representatives to the boards, two-by-twos and committees that are listed on our agenda as former representatives of this council? Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on April 23rd, and we renewed our liability insurance, hired a consultant for sequel work on the Yolo Bypass East Levy Project and the Federal West Sacramento Project, and approved a construction contract for South Port Levy Borrow Restoration.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there other reports within that scope on item 1B? If not, as previously noted, we're going to dispense with item 1C on all of the COVID-focused meetings and proceed to the consent agenda, which is simply item 2, consideration of the minutes of April 22nd. Is there any question or comment on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Orozco.
Second.
By Councilmember Ledesma. Seeing no further question or debate, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on item 2, the consent agenda?
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Merrick Baldwin.
Aye, that motion carries. At the request of the city manager, we're going to move items 4 and 5 to be taken up next on the agenda. And then we'll proceed to the item 3. So item 4 is presentation and discussion of previously entitled development projects potentially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Robinson.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to provide some brief introductory comments on this item, and then I'll turn it over to the city's principal planner, David Tilly, who will deliver the staff report and respond to any questions, along with Katie Jacobson, who's also on the line as well. The impact of COVID-19 itself, as well as the ancillary effects of the public health orders necessary to fight it, have created substantial economic and other impacts that affect residents and affect businesses of all sizes. Due to the large financial investments and the timelines involved with real estate development, development projects are particularly vulnerable to the uncertainties that are created by COVID-19. Many development projects in the city have approved entitlements that contain timelines that could be negatively affected by the COVID-19 crisis. And while the city can't control many facets of the COVID-19 situation, there is an opportunity for the council to alleviate some of the uncertainty facing the proponents of development projects in the city by extending entitlement deadlines. The purpose of the report you're about to hear is to present overview of key entitlement types and to present the council with tolling mechanisms that might be relevant to each of us in order to facilitate a council discussion and ultimately solicit direction from the council on any specific entitlement extension measures that the council would like us to bring back for consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to David Tilly to present the report and respond to any questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I hope everyone can hear me all right. Staff generally refers to a lot of our bread and butter entitlement types, use permit, variances, design review is sort of as common land use entitlements. These are important because the city maintains discretion over these, but particularly over timing. There's not much under state law that really sets necessarily any hard or fast deadlines in terms of how long somebody has to actually vest a use permit or a design review, something of that frame. When these are first approved, they typically have two years to vest that entitlement. And time extensions are available to all the applicants under that primarily through the zoning administrator. And we do do time extensions periodically when certain applicants request them. Parcel and subdivision maps are a different animal in that they're subject to the Subdivision Map Act, which is interwoven into the government code. When tentative maps are first approved by the planning commission, they have three years to take them final. And we sometimes do need to grant local time extensions on those, but there is a limit on those pursuant to the map act. This is all certainly why the legislature during the recessionary years circa 2008 to 2010 passed four separate blanket time extensions for all maps that were otherwise still valid during that time. We are monitoring to see if the legislature may do this again this time around. But we would certainly would anticipate that they would do that, but we can't bank on it either. The third sort of type of entitlement to discuss tonight is development agreements. They're tantamount to a contract with the city and one or more other parties that identify various obligations. And they also allow for other entitlements sometimes to run with the term of the development agreement. Each development agreement is unique and is typically negotiated based on the circumstances at hand. They also typically have their own timeframes, which is another item in the development agreement that's typically negotiated. But in our experience here, those timeframes have often been 15 years or more. We also still have some development agreements that were approved in the 1990s that are still effective that had much longer timeframes on them. Development agreements and the law associated with them is also well nested at the state level. And that may make it more challenging to do any type of a sort of blanket time extension as they apply to development agreements. So staff has included in your report tonight some options for how to address these different entitlement types if desired by the council. We could proceed broadly on them or perhaps more granularly as well. And the attachment for your report tonight includes a list of projects from the last three years to give the council a sense of the number and types of projects that might benefit from a time extension. The list is not 100% exhaustive, but is representational of any of the projects that have come through over the last few years. So this time, I'd like to conclude my staff report and be happy to answer any questions. As John mentioned, our economic development director, Katie Jacobson, is available for questions. And also some questions may be best suited for our city attorney.
All right, and we also have public comments on this item. So if there's no objection, Madam Clerk, would you please display and read the names of those individuals who have submitted public comment on item 3?
Item 3 is the COVID update that comes with the.
Oh, sorry, you're right. I'm in our actual order, not in our numbers. Okay, so we have no public comment on this item, correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
All right, so questions for staff on item 4? Councilmember Guerrero.
Oh, hi. Just a quick question regarding the list that you said, this is not completely exhaustive, but there are others, other projects. Would we be able to see all the projects if this is only a partial list?
Well, this certainly represents the vast majority of the ones that we're able to extract from our permitting system. I say it's not exhaustive because there certainly could have been a couple that we may have missed in there. But tonight, we were trying to look at this sort of on a high level and not necessarily tending to go project by project under anticipation that any action the council may wish to take would ultimately accommodate all projects depending on the criteria in that action.
I see. Oh, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, and thank you, David, for the update. So just to be clear, I think on that point is we're not necessarily voting to do anything, just giving you feedback on direction on these, right? Because I'm looking through them, and I think the point you're getting at, or at least the staff report gets at, is it's an approach that we could take them one by one. So I'm going to be clear on that, right? We're not taking any action on these.
Yeah, any action would have to be taken at a subsequent meeting. So I think tonight, our goal would be to see what actions, if any, the council would want us to take. And then we would bring that back at a subsequent meeting.
So on the list of projects you provided, you do highlight some that could benefit from entitlement extension. I'm just trying to, you may have mentioned this in your open, it blew right by me, but kind of was there a methodology you sort of approached to sort of say these ones would benefit? Is there a, is that what you're getting at on the list?
Yeah, the ones that I highlighted on there really were ones that, at least from my recollection, were ones that might be getting close to otherwise expiring or may have other complicated complications associated with them, especially some of our cannabis ones that have been approved where they're sort of interwoven with the development agreement and a use permit. But they also need to be able to get a state license, and that may be challenging for some of them right now under the current conditions. So we tried to highlight some of the ones that might have some particularly acute needs, but really everything on the list may very well could benefit from additional time.
Right. And I think that's kind of the feedback is getting a little, as these come forward, I would agree, looking at case by case. But I know every one of these, if they came back to us, somebody would have a compelling reason why it's, we need to approve them all. And so there needs to be some sort of lens on the benefit or the work in the past or their value or something. And I just worry, I say worry, but I just want to make sure we're not something that was already a project that has been, for lack of a better term, a bad actor in the past that using this as an excuse to sort of further the project past the time, they weren't hitting their performance milestones anyway. Those are the kind of things I just don't want to see a blanket approval for. So we need, we don't know how long this will last, and certainly all of these merit some consideration. But I also want to make sure that we don't, we can't throw out everything we've learned in the past few years. So again, I just like to see some sort of methodology to it that kind of takes that into consideration. That's my feedback. Thank you.
Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Ledesma. I think that while it seems a little bit, it's easier to do the blanket approach, it does signal to the project proponents that we are looking for some type of activity or movement on some of these projects. So I support the either the case by case or the balancing approach, which was referenced by staff at the end, which is basically maybe a shorter extension in the short term and then maybe a longer case by case extension. So that way, we do have the opportunity to do a further, more intensive examination as to whether or not the extension's warranted. I like to have the control over each of the, each examination. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and for the background. I'm wondering if the case by case work approach that possibly would overload our system or the system of work. So I'm just kind of wondering about that because I know construction isn't allowed, work that's allowed right now during sheltering place. And I know we've heard a lot of folks who want to continue and have us do whatever we can for projects, especially in the construction realm, to continue. So it seems to be that a case by case approach, if it doesn't overwhelm our system, would a good direction. So I'm just curious about that.
For projects that are under construction, they're more or less good to go at this point. What we're talking about here is by and large, projects that have yet to get to that phase. And some may be closer to it than others. But if we want to get them to the construction phase, the question really on the table is, do we want to grant them a little more time on their entitlements to help them get to construction phase? And also noting that many of these projects could be extended by the, through the zoning administrator, but that would take each individual project to apply for that. We would be able to administer that, at least for those that we have the authority to do extensions. The trickier ones really are the maps and the development agreements.
So if we did make an extension, would it be a blanket extension that set it's allowed to be something that's shorter, like not, I know folks across the river did something long. He contemplated something like that, could it be a few months? Or could, it looks like we could also stick with this case by case approach as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's my questions for now. Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree with the issues and the concerns that have been raised about how to approach this and the workload of the administration. I think the path that Mr. Ledesma laid out implicitly, which has been built on by the rest of the council, I support, which is essentially a case by case strategy. But we should also be able to develop some filters that are clear. And so one of them that's come up in this conversation clearly is, are you, were you actually close to building anyway? And if you weren't, if you'd been sitting on this entitlement for the last five years or two years and haven't done anything, then this isn't the cause for an extension. So that seems like one appropriate lens that we might look at as we're kind of figuring out, what do we look at case by case? What do we just say yes to and what do we just say no to? I think in some respects, this is different from the Great Recession. In terms of the Great Recession, we had a reasonable expectation that we were just trying to get back to, this was another recession, it was deeper than normal, but the fundamentals were still all sound and we just needed to get back to normal and the markets had to readjust and all of that. We don't know that with this situation. We don't, I mean, we don't, and none of the, many of these projects proponents are in sectors of the economy in which we don't know how they're going to come back, if at all. And it's not in the community's interest to be tying up land that could be deployed for other purposes as the economy transitions out of the crisis with legacy entitlements that aren't going to go anywhere, either because they weren't going anywhere before or because the markets will have shifted significantly. So I think it is incumbent on us to preserve for our residents and for the community flexibility where we're not in a situation where somebody really was caught up by this crisis in a project that was about ready to go. I think to me, that's the clearest case. That's not, a lot of these projects are not that. You know, many of them are, but a lot of them are not that. And I think we shouldn't, it's not in our interest or the community's interest to be tying up in long-term development agreements or other things, projects that are likely to never happen when we need, when we all need to be thinking about what's the community, how do we move forward as West Sacramento? So I think the case by case makes sense, but we should also be able to develop some policy filters where we might be able to take a bulk of them up together, that yes, these are obviously ones that you go for. We don't need to ask them to fill out more paperwork or whatever. And then there might be others that's like, no, these are obviously not. And so you can apply if you want to, but we're not inviting you to apply for an extension because it doesn't meet the criteria that we're operating under. So I think by the time this comes back in some form, hopefully staff will have been able to incorporate the comments that Mr. Ledesma made and that we've all been building on. Are there comments on this item? Mr. Ledesma, you've called out, you have the right to respond.
No, I think it's not going to be that simple. I think the part, Mayor, you brought up is this is different from 2008, 2009, 2010. But I'm not sure, nobody's sure sort of what lays ahead in the coming months. I know some of these projects, is it simply a delay in construction? And so the timeframe we grant them, I don't want to have to go through it twice, right? So the part I'm speaking to is we don't know sort of what the capital markets or the financing mechanisms these folks had counted on. So we gave them a three-month blanket, three months, I worry about. We may not know if the finance is in place in three months and they have to come back again because their financing fell through. For no fault of theirs, they've been performing, they were on their way. So again, we just, I don't know anything, but I know that would be a concern, especially for construction projects, we've got a long time in the hopper. So I just want to put that lens on it too, because some of these, that lens has to be on it. So anyway.
And those projects that are within a couple of months of losing their entitlements and still intend to move forward, they're not waiting for us to call. So I mean, it's a tiny proportion of this list, so we could easily accommodate them in our processes in order to review them as well. So I don't know that, I also don't think it's sort of a blanket short-term extension is really necessary. Those that need it will come forward, and that's a small portion of this group. And those that don't, we can process as we can before. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right, I agree. I don't think extensions to nowhere for a project should be encouraged in any way. And in a way that you can provide us with the guidance on what we can do to discourage that is a good idea. I do know that some of these projects that I see listed here, the cannabis facilities, which do have some barriers. I think they've had several barriers administratively from regulations being promulgated. And you know, just now, just the situation where the industry is having to close and having to reopen. And it's just a lot of barriers for that particular industry that if there's any guidance you can provide on what that outlook would look like or any here from the list you've provided, if there's some indicators that help us to be able to provide you with more guidance, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, further comments or feedback on item 4? All right, as has been noted, this is simply a review and provide direction to staff, which the council has done. So Mr. Tilly, Mr. Robinson, and Ms. Jacobson, thank you for the report. And seeing that, we'll move then to item 5, which is item 5, which is the presentation and discussion of a project status report for the city's 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Program. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I'm just going to provide a brief contextual introduction to this. Gary Prudal, our CIP manager is going to do the presentation. But similarly to the last item, we wanted to give the council an update on capital improvement projects and the status of those, particularly about the impacts of the emergency on some of those projects. I think we stepped back to just September when the CIP was updated. It wasn't that long ago, seems like it today. But when we did that, you'll recall, we did a lot of cleanup work on the CIP. We have a very ambitious CIP with nearly 150 projects in there. Some very large projects like the one behind me with bridges and other large infrastructure projects. So we wanted to profile a few of those tonight. I think there's about 30 or so that are on the attachment. Gary's going to give you a representative idea in the contents of that attachment. And we have the whole management team from the Capital Projects and Transportation Department here on the call to answer any questions you have about individual projects. I think some of the direction, if we're looking for anything tonight, it's really a status update. But as we get into talking more about the budget in the weeks ahead and a little bit tonight, we also want to give you a clear picture of where funding was coming from for those projects, just to give you a good idea of how things are being funded. Because most projects have multiple funding sources, sometimes very complicated funding mixes. And so we thought it was important to give you this context before we get too far into budget planning ahead. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. As Aaron mentioned, my name is Gary Prudale, I'm the Capital Improvement Manager with the Department of Capital Projects and Transportation. Tonight, I really, I'm not going to go through a project by project review from the status report. I want to give you just a really brief background, talk about three specific projects, and then really open it up to questions. So as Aaron mentioned, last September, September 18th, to be exact, the council approved the 2019 to 2024 CIP. Since that time, city staff has been working on the specific projects identified in the CIP with the express intent of accomplishing them within their own scopes, schedules, and respective budgets. City staff has also made substantial efforts to keep the CIP projects moving forward through their planning, design, and construction phases, even as the COVID-19 pandemic and the associated health orders materially have complicated those processes. Staff from the city's capital projects and transportation department have kept the functions of the department up and running with the staff predominantly working from their prospective homes. As Aaron mentioned, the adopted CIP currently includes almost 150 projects, and they include projects like roads, bridges, traffic signals, sewers, water lines, buildings, studies, and some other unique projects. We've chosen at this time to report on 31 of those projects, as well as two additional activities that we believe are important to the council. These two other items being VIA and the micro mobility, things such as the jump bikes and scooters. The projects that we chose to report upon are those we believe that council has a keen interest in and also the community has a keen interest in. Most are highly visible projects that are being actively worked on and where substantial financial resources have already been pledged through the CIP and through associated budgets. A very few large projects are nearing construction, and some of them still have significant. and some of them still have significant financial shortfalls. If you recall from the budget presentation that uh, Roberta made last year, she uh, she gave a list of about a half a dozen projects that had shortfalls. Um, I want to talk about a few of those this evening, because those are three of the projects that are, we plan to take to construction uh, this year, some of them very shortly. Uh, the three projects I want to highlight tonight are the West Capital Avenue Road Rehabilitation and Safety Enhancement Project, the Sycamore Trail US Fifty Crossing, and Phase One of the Corporation Yard. If you would, um, uh, you all have a copy of the um, status report for the projects. I'm going to be actually working from that, so if you want to go ahead and turn to project one five zero two nine, which is a West Capital Avenue Road Rehabilitation and Safety Project, I want to talk just briefly about that project before we move on. As you know, this is a a very large project for the city. The, it's it's about a three-mile project. Uh, includes improvements both on West Capital Avenue and on Jefferson Boulevard and includes things such as pavement rehabilitation, lane striping, signage, uh, separated bike lanes, additional lighting, enhanced mid-block pedestrian crossings, excess ramp sidewalks, um, traffic signal upgrades, and a host of other items. Also, it also includes some uh, waterline upgrades that are actually part of another project, uh, project two one zero two five will be done with this. Uh, as you can see, the project uh, is an expensive project. The total project cost currently is about a little over sixteen million dollars. We have open bids on this project and we plan on coming back to the council on May twentieth for uh, hopeful ward of bid. Um, one of the things that we found when we opened the bids for the project is that uh, it did come in over what we had estimated, uh, something we had expected, actually. And um, it's about uh, in the range of about six or seven hundred thousand dollars uh, under, or excuse me, over what the engineer's estimate was. That along with the um, any kind of contingencies that we want to plan for at this point leaves the project at about a two and a half million dollar shortfall. Uh, just a sort of a preview. We do not plan on coming back to the council on the twentieth, asking for additional dollars, though. Uh, what we intend to do is, we were already doing this, is to go through with a very fine-tooth comb and during construction, actually reduce the scope of the project um, through different means so that uh, we will essentially stay, stay within our budget. Um, uh, as far as uh, COVID issues associated with this, there were some slowdowns, uh, mainly again through uh, because of staff working through home. Um, but we have been able to get the project out, we have opened bids, and like I said, we're ready to bring it before council in a couple of weeks. Um, maybe before we move on, I'll open up this project for questions, um, and then I'll move on to the two other projects.
Gary, why don't we take the whole package up?
Okay.
Um, and and then we'll come to the council for for overall uh, questions and comments.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, the second project I want to highlight is the Sycamore Trail Phase Two Project. This is project one four zero two one in your list. Uh, by the way, the list is in uh, numerical order, so uh, higher number would be further down the list. A lower number would be further up in the list, so this is one four zero two one, the Sycamore Trail Phase Two Project. Uh, this particular uh, phase of the Sycamore Trail is essentially an overcrossing of US fifty. Um, um, the project currently is in the right-of-way phase. We're working and resolving some utility uh, conflicts. Uh, the engineering design actually is nearing a hundred percent. Um, we have been working diligently with Caltrans in obtaining uh, agreements with them associated with the crossing of US fifty, specifically a maintenance agreement. Uh, we are hopefully close to uh, having that agreement. Currently, we have that scheduled in, um, let me, let me take a list, my list real quick here. We have it scheduled on May twentieth also to bring before council. Uh, that is a tentative date for that agreement. Um, this project is scheduled to go to construction later on this year. Currently, uh, we are looking at November or uh, actually give a a notice to proceed, assuming we can get there. What I wanted to point out in this project is that uh, we still, um, based on our estimates and in our current funding, we are still about two and a half million to three million dollars short uh, for this project. This project won't be as easy to cut scope. Um, certainly uh, different than West Cap where you can maybe uh, uh, pave with less thickness, uh, you can't build a overcrossing of the freeway with uh, say, a bent missing or a pile missing or something like that. So uh, this one's going to be a little bit more challenging to come up with the funding and to actually move ahead. Uh, we are going to be uh, applying for grants between now and then. Um, State Cog Regional Grant uh, is going to be coming up here this uh, late, a little bit later on this spring, and we're going to be applying for some grants associated with that to hopefully fill this uh, the hole in this project. Uh, again, with uh, associated with pandemic, uh, staff has been working from home. Uh, the project slowed a little bit, um, uh, mainly because of of Caltrans, um, taking a little bit longer to get adjusted to uh, working out of the office, uh, it it caused some delays, but uh, we seem to be back on schedule at this point. The last project that I want to highlight is the um, Pork Yard Project, which is uh, let's see here, it is project five two zero seven two in your list. As you know, this is the first phase of the city's new Corporation Yard Project. In this first phase, we would be uh, essentially building out the project site. Um, uh, putting in underground utilities, um, installing a fuel station, uh, laying down paved areas, putting up site fencing, temporary building security uh, and and some other um, minor items. Um, we have actually now bid this project twice. The the last time we opened bids was uh, on April twenty-second, just a few days ago. And um, even with opening bids twice, we are still about two point seven million dollars short on this particular project. Uh, we hope to go to contract, or excuse me, we hope to word the contract on this um, later on in June. Um, however, uh, we we do need to identify some other type of funding to fill that hole for this project to move ahead. At this point, uh, I'm going to uh, close my comments uh, and turn it over to the council for questions. Uh, there are uh, thirty-one projects in the list, and I'm sure you have many questions on that as uh, as Aaron mentioned, uh, the other managers in the capital projects and transportation staff are on the line. They include Vin K, our engineering supervisor, um, Jason McCoy, our transportation planning supervisor, and uh, Jerry, Jeremy Chaplubain, our uh, facilities, or excuse me, uh, construction inspector and facilities development supervisor or manager, excuse me. Um, with that, I will um, turn it back over to the council for any questions that you have on any of the projects.
All right, thank you, uh, Gary, and just a reminder, we're here for the unique focus on the effect of the COVID emergency on delays and costs and revenues for projects, so this is not a we're not, uh, are are, this is not on our agenda tonight for a comprehensive review and discussion of all projects on the capital program, but really in the context of what are the implications and the consequences that we're seeing as a result of COVID and uh, the resulting um, implications for some of the shortfalls that we had identified earlier and that we may be experiencing in the future. Having said that, I do want to say that, give, uh, take to Gary and the public works team, I found this to be an excellent report, um, just very clear, the the structure and the format covered a lot of ground on a lot of different projects in a way that was uh, very understandable, but also very clear about what the choices and the and the history and the issues were without without drowning uh, anyone in in a lot of other information. So I thought this was a really excellent uh, approach for for structuring the presentation to the council. And then second, on the content, um, you know, our focus is tonight on on those, on those areas where we're experiencing delays and or cost shortfalls. But I think what's remarkable in the, in this whole overall set of projects is how much is on track. Um, that the, that the work of our, of our team and our partners and contractors and others in order to uh, keep so many uh, large-scale infrastructure projects moving forward, um, despite everything that's been thrown at at the team and at the at the city and then just at all the partners that we have to work with um, who are dealing with the crisis in their own ways, has been, you know, very remarkable and commendable, and I just want to, I want to thank the the team on behalf of the council, the community for for the, for the, for the work on all of this. And so the the fact that we, that you've only had to focus on a handful, in which we're, we're still dealing with the uh, shortfalls is a, is a testament to the work. So uh, with that, are there questions from members of the council or the public works team? All right, Councilmember Ledesma?
Yeah, thank you, and and thank you, Gary, and and the team. This is a really good report and um, understanding the scope of what we're talking about. I expected really a lot more uh, yellow marks to be kind of highlighting areas. And I know um, the team has been very much focused on these projects for some time. And uh, so a lot of work has been done and 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 so uh, while you highlighted the three projects where we obviously have, we started with a bit of a gap. Uh, and this situation isn't helping it. I'm I'm I am uh, optimistic about a lot of them because um, uh, because so far, we have been on top of them, and we can see that they're, they uh, is this bruising them and trying to read a couple of that are um, of 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 uh, kind of near um, completion or whatever, that we're still on top of them. So I agree with you, Mayor. Thank you for all the good work. I do, I do have a question on back on the West Capital Avenue one, because I understand you opened the bids, I understand we're moving forward and um, and um, but this does have a uh, uh, start construction date here, like now, coming in, and it sounds like you want to move forward on um, on uh, going forward with that project uh, with the reduced scope, which I'm I'm, A, I'm wondering if that, one of the questions I had with the scope change, would we see that again? Uh, again, because this was very highly visible for us to go look at, uh, to approve, and we pulled from, you know, we're getting sources from uh, the, or the second part of the question is, we're getting sources, this is being sourced from six different outside agencies and seven different funds internally. And uh, do we see any any threat to any of the outside ones? Uh, those, those monies are secured in place? Uh, are they, they not threatened at all, Gary, or whoever the appropriate person to address the West Cap project?
Um, yeah, my understanding is that there uh, there isn't any concern per se about any of these uh, grants that we've received. Most of these uh, we've had for a while. Um, and we have not, uh, we have not heard anything uh, of of concern. Uh, we do know that uh, Seacog is planning on going out for additional grants here in the future uh, with money that is projected to come in, even with the uh, the COVID pandemic, so uh, no, I don't expect any concerns from any of the outside sources.
Okay, and I, and I, and I'm assuming that that would go for, I mean, all the ones you highlighted, right? I mean, we would federal grants, state grants are are kind of money in hand, and we can count on those going forward.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then I want to go back to uh, and maybe this is an overarching statement, I know we're going to talk a bit about the finances in the next item, but I I think about, because you brought up um, West SAC On Demand and the Right Share and how we fund that today, and and it looks like we're back for year three approval um, in 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 a couple of months. What's not on here, which will be impacting, is the impact of the, or the other agencies. Um, so uh, a lot of the staff, the transit fund staff, uh, I'm sorry, the transit fund uh, uh, provides the funding for uh, On Demand, Right Share, there are questions about that already. Um, but I know, for instance, uh, and what the impact will be on YCTD, which is a recipient of those, some of those other funds. So again, I don't, I I'm I'm not, this is more as we move forward. Uh, maybe the city, the city manager, Gary, you can, is is we're counting on other parts of uh, we don't know what we, I know what other agencies might require in terms of a budget that may, that may may or may not impact that as well. Is that a right read, especially on that one? And I'm like, and again, I know we have other agencies we do one time or um, that are outside these funds, but uh, um, am I thinking about that the right way?
Yeah, Aaron, I think I'll let you answer that.
Are you, I just want to be clear, are you referring to if if there are um, needs from other agencies such as YCTD?
Yes, that's, yes, the shortfall.
Certainly, that's something on the radar. Um, the, the one that we are are most locally involved with would be a um, the way that that is funded, as you know, is is through TDA funds, and then there's an assumption made for revenue from that project, and um, if there's a shortfall in the revenue, um, the city only has the obligation to pay uh, what's under the contract. So um, that doesn't mean there wouldn't be impacts there and and and, you know, I'm sure we'll um, let us know that, but uh, with YCTD, I think that one is definitely a concern. Um, the difference between the two, though, is YCTD was a recipient of a significant amount of assistance through the I believe it was under the CARES Act, if not the one before. Um, so so whereas uh, micro mobility wasn't, and so
Yeah.
concerned. Uh, but yeah, we don't know yet in terms of what the long-term impact looks like from um, outside organizations like YCTD.
Thank you, Aaron.
Mayor Pro Tem, saying, "Nene."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had uh, similar questions to Mr. Ledesma about the West Cap Rehab Project, so I, I thank you for asking those. Um, I also want, want to agree with you, Mayor, that it's really helpful to have the COVID nineteen impact chronicle for us, and there certainly is a lot of activity still underway. So I am really impressed by our staff team and the partners for moving along as many projects as possible. Um, and the, and having this, I think we'll probably turn to this um, at some time in the future, but it's really helpful to see the status. The only other question I would add um, on to Mr. Ledesma's uh, questions about the West Cap, the West Cap Rehab Project. As you mentioned, the scope um, changing to the scope moving down to um, fit the budget, and I'm wondering um, just in general, how those kinds of decisions are made, and if there's anything significant with that cycle back to us. I I just, I'm not um, not sure I understand how that happens in real time.
Sure, this is uh, this is Gary. Uh, we will be taking a look at all of the different items uh, in in the scope of the project. Uh, one of the things that we will look at specifically is the possibility of uh, decreasing the thickness of the pavement in certain areas. Uh, for instance, uh, areas underneath the the bike paths. Uh, for instance, doesn't need to be as thick as uh, the pavement where where cars and trucks will be driving on it. So we'll take a look at uh, you know, lessening the the depth of the asphalt in those areas. We also will, will take a look at potentially decreasing the depth of the asphalt, even in the paved areas, as well as looking at other specific things that we might be able to uh, not do at this point, or to cut back on um, maybe the uh, the color of the striping or um, you know, in in certain areas where the, where the uh, where the bike paths are, or 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 very specific things like that. We haven't decided on any particular items yet, but we're looking at all of those items. How that might come back in the future? Um, potentially, if if we were to say, uh, lessen the thickness of the asphalt, um, a good example of that would it, it may not last quite as long as it would if it was thicker. So that would be a very, um, you know, very specific type of thing where you can sort of see that hey, by doing this, this will not last as long. Uh, it may last only seven years rather than ten years, or maybe ten years rather than fifteen years, something like that. And and, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that it reminds me, what you're describing is more like a design-build kind of project in a way where um, there's a scope and then it's kind of um, being modified as a bit budget in that way. I don't, I don't know that that's exactly what you've described, but it sounds like the project The budget in that way. I don't, I don't know that that's exactly what you've described, but it sounds like the project itself. Still intact, but there's some slight modifications.
Exactly, yeah. The 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 project is still intact, definitely. The types of things you will see out there are the the types of things that we wanted to bring forward into the project. There were two, really two things that we wanted to accomplish in this project. One was. To enhance the safety along West Capital. That was that was preeminent, and that is still our. I would say our number one goal in this project. The secondary goal and and still a very, a very high goal for us is to rehabilitate rehabilitate the pavement out there. Although. Honestly, if it will look the same when it's done. The what you will notice is is down the road, no pun intended, but down the road. You know, seven or 10 years or something like that, it may not hold up quite as well as it would have if we had spent. The additional cost.
All right, thanks, Gary. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one thing to that? I just want to address the, I think a couple of you had asked it is how will you see that before the the final decision is made? To go forward. So on May 20th, that's the date we're targeting simply because. The bid has a lifespan, it has to be awarded by. What we can do is lay out exactly what that decision making process was in terms of the the full scope it was in the original project. How we got to where we're going to ultimately be recommending. We can tell you it's a it's a fairly big number and given that the the choices are fairly limited at this point for where. Funding would come from, we can at least give you some options there. But we can explain how we got from from that point to the recommendation when we bring it back.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to commend, you know, putting this together, it really provides a good comprehensive. You know, as far as these projects are concerned, an understanding of what funding sources and the timeline and. You know, specifically the COVID nineteen impacts. And I'm sure it'll be evolving as we move forward. What I do appreciate also is the transparency of, you know, the gaps in some of in a couple of the projects here. Or to be determined. I'm not really sure what exactly that means, but. To me, that means like we need to figure out where we're going to get the money. And in looking at what our budget deliberations moving forward. If there's a way to protect the general fund as much as possible, because I don't anticipate us being able to have the revenue. Down the road, you know, to ensure that we can maintain everything that we're funding today. So to the extent that. We find a measure that has a revenue source and, you know, we decide that maybe we can pull from that and. You know, be able to fund these projects that are having some gaps. To be able to figure that out, I think that would be really helpful as far as some guidance and. To the extent that we can also free up and and make some use of our general facilities fund to the extent that it provides. Funding for the projects that are eligible for that use, I think is really helpful. But I think the creative use of all of our funding streams and and. Making it tie together so that we could continue with our projects is. I always have admired how the administration has done such a great job in pulling that together. And, you know, making our city beautified and continuing some excellent projects that I know we've had. Had planned and envisioned and hit a little bump on the road here and not not anticipated, maybe a little bit of a recession for a period of time. But seeing what we can do to protect our general fund and maintaining the the progress on all these projects. But there is one question I do have. You said there was a gap on the pork yard bigger than, I think, well, it says to be determined, but there was a gap and I hear I see eight point four million. Can you explain that a little more? Is it or do you want to explain it later?
The current gap is around 2.7 million.
That's the, okay, and then you said that something came a little higher than the eight point four. As far as.
I'm not.
The bid opening happened April 22nd. Was there anything as far as you noticed on the response from the bids that?
Jeremy, can you answer that question?
Yeah, no problem. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So the difference from the previous bid opening. We did put a an ad alternate in there regarding the fuel station. The project still, even with the ad alt alternate. Which was would be the full bid amount actually came in, I believe, about three or 400,000 less than the previous bid. And then altogether, if we didn't exercise the adult. It reduced the bid from the the apparent low bid from the previous bid. And the and the contingencies and lowered the costs about a million dollars. So we we were able to close the gap a little bit. But there there still is that that 2.7. In regards to the bid, they were very bids, they were very competitive. Between the six, I believe there's about a difference between the first and last place bidders of. About $900,000. So they were very competitive.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for all the questions and comments. I had. A couple, I mean, so we're taking this up under the COVID item and and I just want to emphasize, though, that we. There's at no time are all of our projects fully funded. This is. This is not some, this is not some, you know, radically different situation where suddenly unbeknownst to anything, a crisis happened and now projects have gap. In a capital program of for the city of the size and ambition of West Sacramento. It's normal for for various projects to have gaps at various times. You know, we will will be competitive for a grant that will cover part of a project and we still, we need to get the rest of the money. And but we don't send the grant back. We don't not apply for the grant because we, you know, you got to pick up the. The change in the couch when you can. So we always have projects of that of that nature. And then. The bid environment, our our staff does, you know, does the best they can to try to estimate what the what the cost of a project is actually going to be, but until you actually. Put the bid out with that specific construction environment, based on what other projects are happening in the region and the cost of materials and labor, you just don't know. So it is entirely normal for for some projects to have a surplus and many projects to have some form of gap at any one particular time. So. This is not unusual. And and that was one of the takeaways for me from this report. I was, as I think Mr. Ledesma said, I was expecting. A much more marked up version of this table that would show that many more projects that we thought were were safe were in jeopardy, and that isn't the case. And so I'm very encouraged by this evening's report and by the strategy. Also, you know, CCOG is a major driver of a lot of these external funds. They're listed here in the grid, both as CCOG, but also. Many of the grants that are shown as state or federal are actually delivered, are actually allocated through CCOG. And they are not in the same situation as the Transit District or others in terms of those funds being. Clawed back or or responsive in some way to to the economy. These have been allocated by the Transportation Commission for the rounds so far. But I think we can be confident in the grant in the grants that we already have received to to proceed with those projects. On a going forward basis, you know, the the next funding round is, as Gary has mentioned, is coming up in the fall from CCOG and. We will be competitive. We won't get every gap filled and every new project filled funded that we want, but we will be competitive. I'm the chair of the Transportation Committee. I will make sure. What I would ask for for our public works team who represents us in the CCOG advisory committees is I know. Some public works directors have been pushing on our grant programs to reduce the local match requirements. And that that I think is a very seductive idea for public works directors trying to figure out how to fill fill gaps like this. But I want to encourage our our representatives from at the staff level to resist that temptation. Because we are actually in a better financial position with our capital program than most other jurisdictions in the region. And so the extent to which, you know, money is freed up because some projects cannot proceed throughout the region. We're likely to be a beneficiary of that. And so just tact strategically, it does not make sense for us to be advocating for reducing those match requirements. When we're one of the few jurisdictions that in general knows how to come up with the resources in order to make that match. And so this came out, came up at our last CCOG board meeting. We sent the issue back to committee and to in order to reverse what the Public Works Directors had recommended. And so I don't know. Which city voted how in the public work structure, but just to just to make a request that we we think tactically about this as we go forward to make sure that we're maximizing our access. To to what is, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of of state and federal funds through through CCOG. I I'm glad to hear the all the questions about the West Capital Avenue project and the scope changes. And I think every what what the point that has been made clearly tonight is. That there's no one, no one on the councils is interested in, you know, reducing the number of bike lanes or. Shutting off a sidewalk or or, you know, any of the any of the of the key features that are necessary for that project to do what it's supposed to be doing. And I want to 100% agree with that, including the the accommodation of the future fiber optics. And one thing that we we are learning during, or two things that were that are becoming very clear during this. This this emergency, even though we already knew them before. One is that are the need for continued investments, continuous investments and planning for broadband infrastructure improvements, which is what that is. The 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 preparation of infrastructure for the for the laying of conduit. For for fiber optic broadband, that that's essential and it's essential across every part of the community. And at the at the highest possible speeds in order to press to remain not just competitive, but for for, you know, more and more of our residents to be able to. Telework and many more and more of our companies to be able to have folks telework into them as well as the traditional economic development reasons. The other thing that's been clear, maybe that was less expected as a result of the shelter order is a an even higher appreciation for. Alternative modes of of getting around and trail. And. It was, as our Parks Director can testify, and she has many times, trails were the breakout star of the public engagement and participation process that we conducted around the. The Parks Master Plan updates. That trails were identified already in the community as one of the top priorities across West Sacramento for investment. And and certainly what we've seen in the weeks of the shelter order is as even more evidence and appreciation for. The trail infrastructure, both as a way to get outside and to recreate, but also for just basic connectivity. And two of the projects that we that we have in the in this capital program. Are are essential north-south connector projects. And because there's only one high school and only one recreation center in the south and there's only one. County health, community care, health clinic, north-south access by alternate modes that are safe. For walking and biking and for strollers is absolutely essential. So I just want to put an exclamation point. Behind those two projects and they are the Sycamore, the Sycamore Trail Extension over the freeway that you mentioned, Gary. And also the Fifth Street widening underneath the freeway. That is, you know, I think probably the most infamous of all of our of our bicycle routes in the city. You know, underneath the Highway 50. Where at Fifth Street, that's part of the Riverfront Street extension and that both projects have been underway for a long time. And if anything, this emergency has has just underscored how critical those are for both outdoor activity, but also for basic mobility. All right, Councilmember Rusko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had wanted to say exactly that a lot of the things that you'd said. And thank you to the to staff, to to really touch on this. I mean, I'm only echoing my my colleagues, but. I'm a very visual learner and so looking at these projects and the sources of funding. And kind of where we are time wise, this is a gold mine. And as Mayor Protem Sandin mentioned, I have a feeling we're going to keep going back to this. Because it's just a fantastic piece of work. But yeah, my feelers went up on the West Capital Ave. Project as well as the Sycamore Trail overpass as well for those reasons. People, we've had, you know, a natural change in our environment due to this pandemic and. More people now than ever are really taking the opportunity to enjoy the amenities outside and many of them that were not yet finished. We still have lots of ways to go, but now I think there's a lot of excitement around what this can be. And, you know, the ability to to say it's travelly safe, excuse me, safely travel around our city without using a car is, I think, is now on the horizon for a lot of people. And so for me, not only because of that, but also because of the diversity of funds that are supporting each of those projects. Those are the two that definitely stood out for me as as two of those that we really should pay attention to. And all of that, and I know we're going to have subsequent comments, I won't belabor the matter here, but clearly I don't want to. I wanted to just communicate that, you know, if we shortchange something with respect to the West Capital Road rehabilitation because we're short to 2.7 million dollars. But yet in seven years, we have to come back and pay, you know, five times that much to to remedy the problem that we didn't first take care of, you know, initially. That's not going to be pretty unappealing as well. But two very, very important projects. Again, thank you, staff, so much for all this information to all of us.
All right, thank you. So this this was a report and presentation item. So now, and thank you to Public Works and the team for that report. So now we're going to return to item three, which is an update in actions on the city's COVID nineteen response actions. And on this item that we have received, public comments pursuant to our procedure. So, Madam Clerk, would you please post the names of those who have submitted public comments on item three? And for those for those of our viewers or listeners who have a hearing impairment, if you would also read out loud their names as well.
Yes, for item three, update in actions on city's COVID nineteen response, we received public comment from Samantha White and Resina Rodriguez.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And for anyone who's watching the meeting, either live or recorded. The full text of the of the comments submitted by by both of these individuals is available on the city's website under the council agenda item in PDF form. All right. So thank you, Mr. Laurel, for the for the report on item three.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So as we do every week, I want to turn your attention to attachment one of the report. Just like previous weeks, I've highlighted new additions to this. I'm going to touch on a few of those. We are in in week eight here of our COVID nineteen emergency response. Just getting to the statistics right at the front, the most important numbers are the case data. We have, as of today, and the county just updated, I think we have 51 total cases. There are 18 hospitalizations in West Sacramento. Countywide, there's 162 cases. If you're looking for a trend in a encouraging one, I'll draw your attention to that table. If nothing else, while the number of cases is still, you know, obviously going up. The rate at which it's going up is not. And so on a week to week basis. There is some evidence that what we're doing is working. So that's that's encouraging to see, but certainly. As evidenced by all the all the work on the public health side and the messaging from the governor and. You know, all the work that has to be done still to put a put this thing boxed in. That isn't done. And so we'll continue to watch that and report on the on the data here. On the next page, there hasn't been much change on the public safety side in terms of the call volume. Things are still a little bit down. You see the numbers there. Public health order enforcement has probably been, over the last few weeks, the most evolving of the work that we're doing. It comes with new challenges every time another change is made. Most recent one was when the mask requirement went into effect. Our code enforcement manager, Josh Shirley, has been doing a great job in outreach to retailers that are being reported appropriately for concerns. For either employees or customers that were quick to be complying with the mask order. So. We're doing a lot of outreach on that, getting good responses. It's very important that the major retailers are the focus because really that's where most most traffic occurs, first of all. Which is why it's in place in the first place. But also, we want to set an example across the board, both for businesses that need to comply, but also with residents that that. We hope and expect will take that very seriously. There's a reason the mask order is part of the public health order. And so a lot of the cases that have been coming up lately have been associated with that. The other cases tend to be more of the same, whether they're residences, where groups are meeting, things like that. So they're doing a good job to keep up with that caseload. We're up to 96 total at this point at the at the close of the week. So that gives you an idea of how that's going. Call center has been very steady. The number of calls have been about the same week to week. The topics haven't changed much. I do know, just anecdotally, they. uh, they had a very busy day yesterday. Um, I think a lot of people are, are, uh, watching what's happening at the state level, interpreting what's happening at the county level and trying to figure out, uh, what it means. And so, um, there, a lot of the calls are probably associated with that. Um, and I'll get into that a little bit in a minute, um, actually right now. So, uh, in the emergency declarations and actions piece, um, you're aware by now, the county has put out, uh, what they're calling a roadmap to recovery. Uh, think of that as a parallel to what the governor laid out in terms of the plan for, uh, reopening in phases. Um, phases of, of risk tolerance based on the uses that would be phased back in, um, away from the, the public health order. So the county, I believe the Board of Supervisors, it was yesterday, they had a meeting to, uh, receive a presentation and, and provide uh, comments on the roadmap to recovery. There is a, a, a team of staff from all the other, uh, cities in our city, of course, uh, that are meeting regularly and, um, collecting comments from other staff, uh, for that document. Uh, mainly things like, um, are they treating businesses the right way in terms of how they categorize the level of risk? Uh, we are, I can tell you, we're, we're making the comment because I think we should be making it every opportunity we, we can to really emphasize the key to true economic reopening and recovery has to be paired with a robust testing and tracing program. A lot of that's out of the county's control. We understand that completely, uh, but, but we are making that comment every time we can. And it's encouraging at least to see some talk of that at the state level. Uh, there's already a lot of that at the national level and though, uh, some of you, particularly the mayor, have been involved in that. Uh, and we can talk about that more later. The second part is, uh, the, the mask order was done on, on March 24th. Uh, the part that isn't in here because it's not done yet, but you're all probably aware, there is expectation that tomorrow, the county public health official will be extending the public health order, uh, we believe through May. Uh, we're not exactly sure what the contents will be, but I think the basic issue is the state order is still operative and uh, county orders can be more restrictive than the state, but certainly can't be less restrictive. And so I think they're, they're trying to figure out the balance there. And we do expect to see something tomorrow, uh, from the public health official, um, that would, that would extend this, uh, through May. Moving on, I, um, I wanted to touch on a couple of things on testing on that topic. We were approached over the weekend by the county EOC, and that was through Cal EOS, uh, about setting up a testing center. They're, they're now going around the state, uh, setting up testing centers that would be open to the public. Um, Yolo County is looking at having a couple, uh, potentially one at the fairgrounds. And then, um, my comment was, hey, let's not, let's not leave out East Yolo here. Um, it's often, oftentimes the, the resources get focused on the other parts of the county. And, and West SAC is, is a little bit, um, challenged there because of geography, uh, isn't in our, in our side. So we, um, asked them to prioritize us for, uh, a testing center. We offered the community center, uh, main room there because it can be isolated. Um, it's conducive to that kind of activity. Uh, so that's in the works. I don't have any confirmation of that yet. Hopefully by next week we'll know more. I know they were looking to get this going, um, as soon as the beginning of May. Uh, the testing volume isn't through the roof, but it, it, I'm told that it's about 150 tests a day. So at least it's a good start. And we're also hoping that we'd be able to get priority for, um, our employees, our first responders. Uh, so we're, we're making all those comments and then working with them, try to get that going, um, and, and have West SAC be part of it. Uh, skipping ahead to communications, I want to touch on a couple of things. Um, just for, for your sake, we, uh, I wanted to note that we are bringing back the council newsletter, uh, that you're used to receiving every week during normal times, uh, to give you all the, the updates on things that are, have nothing to do with COVID-19. So we thought it was important to get that going again. It's also important for our employees to see that, uh, information. So, uh, we're going to be doing it on a, on a bi-weekly basis, uh, just to, um, lessen the, the burden on staff. Uh, but you'll, you'll, uh, you can expect to start seeing that, um, next week, and I think it's going to be on Monday. Also, I want to note that the, the mayor did an interview with Russian American Media focusing on the mask order and reinforcing the public health order compliance. Um, the interview was obviously translated into Russian, so hopefully it did got good outreach to that community. Um, and then on social media, we have the same, but an updated version of the same report from last week. So you can see an idea of what got the most attention on each of our, uh, social media platforms over the last week. Also, uh, sort of related to communications, but it's actually listed under the Housing and Social Services section. I wanted to highlight that we did a newsletter, uh, we, we call it our H-Family West Sacramento Newsletter. Uh, this one was, was, um, mainly, right, almost entirely focused on, uh, COVID-19, uh, relief or other information and, um, very good format, um, has, has a far reach to the, to the mailing list, um, that are under that program. So, uh, good work by the, uh, communications staff and John Robinson in particular on that. Um, and Christine Prater in, in Parks, I'm sure was heavily involved too. Also in that section, uh, we have a couple of updates. I don't want to go too much into the, the foundation grants. I'll let the Vice Mayor, uh, talk about that, but, um, there's a lot of activity on that program. But also notable is that the West SAC Foundation, uh, within the last, I, I should have reported on this last week. Um, but they, they, uh, awarded two emergency grants, one to the Children's Alliance, one to Meals on Wheels. Uh, they are, uh, trying to figure out a way to, um, do their, their fundraiser this year, uh, even though there's challenges, uh, with, with social distancing requirements and public health order, but, um, they're hoping to make additional grants later in the year, especially in this environment. Moving on to the business section, um, just a couple of things I want to report. Um, Councilmember Orozco, who is our representative on the, uh, Regional Sanitation District Board, um, fortunately let us know about a program that they were offering to their commercial customers to give a discounted rate. Um, we were in conversations with, uh, the district about it, but there are some challenges because we, as you remember, we handled the billing, uh, for them in that program. So it's, it's, it's kind of a two-step process. We're working that out. So the businesses will get some relief, um, for ones that are closed. Um, they won't have to pay their full, normal, uh, sewer rates. And then the other, the other one I was going to highlight here, it's brand new, the Chamber and our Economic Development Staff have coordinated on, uh, the West SAC Takeout Campaign. It's a, another effort, um, really, um, involved one, uh, with the Chamber, the Board. Um, a lot of you, I, I believe are already involved in it, um, in terms of getting, um, outreach messaging going. But the basic idea is we want to be able to support West Sacramento businesses, uh, the best we can. And one of the ideas that came out of a, of, of the conversations with the Chamber and, and our staff have been having with restaurants in particular, is that it'd be great if we could do something to both promote them, but also encourage people to, uh, get takeout from those locations and also buy gift cards, uh, that can be used now or later. Helps them out a lot because it gives them immediate revenue. Um, so, uh, thank you for being involved in that. I know, uh, the Chamber, if you haven't been, uh, approached, uh, I would expect it. So it's just getting started this week. So, uh, more to come on that. Uh, last couple of things, I wanted to just give you a, an update on the, on the, uh, last section here on, uh, next to last section, I found the resiliency framework, as I'm calling it now. Um, I did make some updates here based on the feedback I got last week. I appreciate that. I just want to give you a sense of why it's important, why it's important to me as the manager, but also I think, uh, to our staff and then to you as the council, the community. Uh, we really want to be clear about what we're, what we're doing beyond the emergency phase, the operational phase of the EOC. We have to move on to start thinking about, uh, the big themes that we're going to be faced with. The number one thing is the budget, which I'll talk about in a minute. And that's where my focus really needs to be, uh, supporting, uh, Roberta, our, our Administrative Services and Finance Director, uh, working on that, uh, very closely with her. Uh, but that means I, I can't, um, devote as much attention as, is, is going to be needed to some of the other, uh, things that, that need to be focused on as well. Um, as the public health order evolves and we have to look ahead to what it means to our services and our own operations, uh, really going to lean on our city manager, Maniver Lynn, uh, to lead that team to look at how we start to figure out, um, how to adapt our, our programs and services to, uh, whatever we want to call reopening or not. Um, that, that, it, it's going to be a topic that's going to be consistent. And then the other two that I talked about last week are really just learning from this experience and, and making sure that we're, uh, using that, that lens to, uh, adapt and evolve and innovate our processes and, and, uh, and, uh, what we can do to both be better prepared, but also uh, be better off, uh, from what we learned from this. Uh, the last piece is, um, the one that, it really relates to the last agenda topic. Um, you saw we have a very ambitious capital program. A lot of those projects can be directly associated with, if they happen, there will be, um, stimulus because of them. That's really what a lot of those are about. That's what a lot of the tools we have are about. Um, and so we really need a team between the Economic Department and Capital Projects Department that are focused on, um, both delivering those projects, getting other grant funds and, and doing it smartly so we can, uh, leverage as much private investment as possible, uh, down the road. So with that, I'm going to get into, uh, the budget and, and our intention tonight is not at all to, um, go too much in-depth here, but we wanted to, we heard you. Um, I know everyone's anxious. Everyone wants more information about what things are looking like. Um, Roberta's is here tonight also and we can answer questions together on this, but I wanted to just give you a quick summary. Uh, we are doing a very comprehensive workshop on May 13th. The reason I've, I've, um, set that date as, uh, the one we'd like to do the workshop is because a lot of that information that is going into it is still, um, still being compiled, still evolving. We have all the pieces of it, but we don't, what we don't have is the full picture. And we want to give you the full picture, uh, because a lot of it interrelates. Uh, but what we can do tonight, and it's in the report, is give you a, a glimpse of what we're looking at in terms of the, uh, the initial challenge, uh, particularly on the general fund. So the, the May 13 workshop will go across funds. We'll look at all of the tax measures, all on the revenue side. Uh, we'll look at the impacts of each fund. We'll also look at the expense side and, and some of the positive news, uh, from the current year in terms of savings, but also how we, uh, plan to, uh, carry that forward into the next year through our, uh, expenditure reductions. So we'll get into all that on the 13th. Um, we'll talk about the, the, um, impacts that occurs, um, as we look at the long-term model and what that looks like beyond the two-year, uh, budget. But for tonight, I, uh, again, I just want to give you, uh, a summary. The general fund impacts that we're looking at based on changes to sales tax, TOT, and some of the other main, uh, general fund components is about a 7% revenue loss over the adopted budget. Um, that's, that's, uh, the percentage side. In terms of, uh, numbers, um, we have a, a general fund budget over the two years of about 125 million. Um, and, and the revenue shortfall, the revenue, uh, that we anticipated that likely isn't going to come in is about 8.6 million. So that's where the 7% comes from. Uh, that is offset because like I mentioned, we have had savings. We have a lot of positions that are not open that were, uh, either vacated or, or they were approved in the last budget. We just haven't filled them yet. Uh, so there's going to be a lot of savings there. Um, and in fact, about 100, or I'm sorry, 1.5 million. A lot of that's going to move forward into next year, but right now we're looking at a base challenge or shortfall of about 7.1 million. Um, so that's, that's just, uh, what we have as a snapshot of today. I can tell you that's the number we're focusing on, both on the, um, expense side, but also all the creative thinking that our staff are really good at doing when it comes to how can we, how can we pay for things and, and try to insulate the general fund as much as possible. There are challenges with that, but, but that's, uh, part of what we're doing. But equally important to that is looking very closely at our expenses and figuring out, um, things, things really need to happen only if they really need to happen at this point. And, and we'll give you a lot of ideas about what that means, um, on the 13th. So the report, uh, does highlight a lot of the, the, um, the differences with West Sacramento. A lot of that is thanks to the, the actions the council have taken in, uh, the last decade, really, whether it's, um, moving ahead with tax measures that are supporting programs and projects that, uh, we couldn't do with just the general fund, if, if, if that's what we were facing today. Uh, but also some of the uniqueness about West Sacramento in terms of where we receive revenue from. Uh, as you know, I think we are more dependent on property tax than most cities, uh, which in this case is a very good thing. Uh, we didn't have a, a rug that was pulled out from under us overnight, uh, like a lot of cities did, or at least to the extent that a lot of cities did, that we're heavily reliant on, uh, revenue from hotels, uh, from TOT, uh, from retail sales tax. Uh, we have a good base there, but it's not our, we're not dependent on it. We don't have car dealerships. We don't, we don't have very many big box stores like a lot of the other cities do. And they're suffering now because none of those are in operation and they're, and they're losing, uh, a big portion of their general fund. I, I don't say that to paint a picture that is, um, optimistic because certainly we are going to have very challenging times ahead. Uh, but, but we are approaching it with a, a different lens than a lot of cities have to, uh, do right now. Um, we're talking about a lot of the same things and, and we will continue to do that. Uh, but I at least wanted to throw that out there, that, that the council has done a very good job of setting this up, uh, for dealing with the situation, both through those measures, but also through reserves. Uh, a lot of what we're doing in, in fiscal year 1920, on the expense side, is actually funding those reserves to a point, where we need it now. You know, we're at, we're at 20% on our reserves. Um, and, and we're going to need to have that buffer in the years ahead. So I'll stop there and, uh, I'll turn it back to the council. Like I said, Roberta's, uh, on the line also, if there are any, um, questions I can answer about the budget, or I might just turn to her anyway, uh, but expect a lot more on May 13th on this topic. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Let's turn to the council, uh, keeping the, the manager's, uh, last comment in mind that we are returning to this topic on May 13th. So this is not a full-scale, let's go line by line in the budget, uh, process, but, uh, but really to, to get the, the snapshot that the council has requested in the last couple of meetings, to give us a barometer and to start giving, uh, potentially some gen- general direction and feedback that can help to, um, frame up the May 13th workshop and also make sure that we're, we have the proper context for decisions that we needed to make tonight and that we will need to make in the, in the meeting in between. So, Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. And, and Aaron, uh, you, you, you turned your lights out, but I, I'm picturing you there, uh, wondering what I'm going to say, right? So, uh, but I, I do want to thank you and, and Roberta, uh, for, um, for putting this together. I know we've been talking offline, uh, and during council meetings about the need, just to kind of give us a glimpse of, of what you're seeing so far. And more importantly, uh, knowing that you and the, and the team that's on the, on, uh, in the meeting tonight and, uh, uh, that are working with staff every day. Um, uh, it, it, knowing that you're thinking about these things, you're already starting to take some actions. I'm not filling positions or, or taking some other actions is, is, is what I needed to, personally needed to hear. And I'm glad you guys are. It's also, uh, I know we have, uh, we'll have the decisions to make, but it is hopeful to a degree that looking at what you presented today, um, I know over the past years, the, the way we've conducted our budget and the way you've helped guide it and the way, uh, the staff has helped manage it. Um, we were post 2010. Uh, I thought we've been very disciplined in creating the culture of n- never trying to get back to what was pre-2000, uh, the, the recession. Uh, we were trying to find what the new normal was and we were always conscious, no matter it was eight years out, eight years out, nine years out, or or as we adopted this budget, you know, in post-COVID-19. Uh, we were always keeping an eye on what, what's next and let's not lose sight of kind of the disciplines we've had all put in place. Uh, even though the budget, uh, was, the, the revenues were going up, uh, in sales tax and property tax. And we were seeing some really good gains. We were, I, I, I just applaud the council and Aaron, you and your leadership and the staff for never losing, I, we got some tough decisions we're going to make. I don't want to paint, I'm not painting that, but what I wanted to understand was where our fundamentals so far showing that we, 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 we were on the right path. And this kind of, I think that this paints that picture that, uh, we weren't, we're not overly dependent upon, um, a lot of different, uh, areas that other cities are. Uh, we're balanced, our portfolio is balanced across, uh, where we get our revenues from. And we're disciplined on the, the, on the, um, expense side. Uh, we will need to get creative, um, but I also, um, we can't be afraid of making tough decisions going forward and, um, uh, we can't, you know, we can't, um, all the creativity in the world doesn't mean we, you know, we, we don't still have to make tough decisions and, and, and do the things we need to make this, the city sustainable and keep core services and keep other services the city is going to depend on. Our residents have kind of depend on in place. So I appreciate the update and I more so want to thank a, a, all the leadership, uh, from you, Aaron, and, and the team for, uh, kind of pulling this together. I know we have a meeting coming up on the 13th and I appreciate the need for getting facts behind it, but certainly, um, is a good snapshot of kind of where you're, where we are, where, where we're going and sets us up for a good discussion and, um, uh, in, in May. So thank you.
Are there questions or comments? Councilmember Guerrero?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I do want to, um, uh, sort of question or process a little bit, but I, I first want to remark on, um, the incredible work that everybody in the city, you know, considering we're, we're in this now, um, six weeks, uh, six weeks of an intensive, um, you know, workload situation, working and, and the conditions, we're all working from home. Um, but still managing, um, in this fragile situation, uh, with the limited resources, um, the city. And the, the city staff have really pulled through and just looking at this report, everything that's been done, including mitigating the spread through Project Roomkey, just getting all those individuals sheltered, um, and administratively collaborating with the county. Um, and, um, all of Yolo Food Bank, I know that they're via still doing incredible work and, um, providing, um, meals delivered. Um, meals delivered. And um now looking forward, I know that um we are looking at a, an extended shelter in place and the roadmap to recovery. Um, is something I'm I'm interested as far as like the business community and uh we've heard from other individuals who. Who are looking to find ways on what that's gonna look like. How can they help? What can we do to improve on that? And I understand testing. Is extremely important. The test, um, the trace uh and the test and trace is extremely important so that we can prevent the spread. And I appreciate that we're having the masks because there are a lot of individuals who want to get out. But also want to feel safe and I think that provides the additional. Some protection, but we still need to maintain that social distancing and I'm looking. To see, you know, more definitively, you know, as you are engaging. With the county officials, what that looks like and. To do what, everything we can to advocate at the state level. So that we have testing here in West Sacramento, as you described. I strongly support that. Want to see what we can do to get that here as soon as possible. I think it's way, it's a little overdue. I think we need to have that. That. Is an incredible part of our recovery here. And um also the P P E, just making sure that we have access for our residents and our businesses. Um, and working collaboratively with anybody that is in need of having that so that they're protected. Um. Looking at the budget, I I think my comments there are going to be around um. You know, preventing any layoffs. Um, we've been through some hard times in the past in two thousand and eight and I think that um. Administratively, we've been operating on a on a lean. Um, you know, budget for uh all the folks that have been operated administratively. So I um. Want to do everything we can to either do like a hiring freeze for the non-essential workers. Um. The, you know, essential ones, I think we need to continue. Um. But for the non-essential, and I know you probably have the authority to do that, but would recommend that so that, you know, we can um. Preserve as much of our uh general fund money as as possible early on. That seven point one is. A little scary, I think, um, even though it seems small in our overall budget. Um, I I think that that's a a middle, you know, and we don't know how much bigger it can get if we're gonna be in a shelter in place. And how much longer that's gonna take. Um, the rollout and the details. Are still um unclear. We're we're hearing from the governor, but we're not getting the definitive answers. On what that's gonna look like months uh on out. So. I'm really concerned that if we don't um have our businesses operating in some way, that we are gonna have. Um, a bigger hit to our budget. I know sales tax is probably not our biggest um budget um uh. Part, uh, but I think it is, you know, important to continue to have that and I think it does have an impact in our budget. At some point down the road, maybe not today or maybe not in the next six months, but I think that there is is um. You know, with the recession, it took us a while to get back up and running again. So um with that, it it'll have, you know, I remember with during the recession, we had um property taxes go down. So it does have like a a an effect. If we don't have people working, eventually the housing market will have a hit and we have a lot of plans on moving. Forward with development and um housing. So I just just want to make sure we can do what we can to help our businesses. Local businesses um remain intact. So just with that, um, appreciate the preliminary view of the budget. It really helps um for us to be able to see what we can do to provide you with the input moving forward.
Other uh questions or comments on the item? Uh, I'll just say thanks for the, thank, thank you also for for uh this uh preview, for the snapshot um and for the analysis. It is um. At once, um, uh. A bit comforting and still very disturbing, uh, not the report itself, but but the underlying fiscal uh situation is. Is a, is a, a huge challenge. I've been on this council uh during during the Great Recession. Um, and during the recession that preceded that, the dot com in September, um, September eleventh recession from a decade prior. And um, we're never as prepared as we think we are. We're never as solid on on so on solid financial ground as we think we are. Um, and part of that is because uh we cannot reasonably forecast the rest of the economy. Um, particularly, this is a, this year, this situation is a much more dramatically so. But also, um, we almost always fail to adequately forecast the impacts on other government agencies. And this is why Mr. Ledesma's comments about the transit just report important, uh, but also the government agencies that um that regulate and control. Um, and and so, uh, you know, given the amount of federal spending that's been occurring in these in these last few weeks through the relief packages and hopefully at least one more to come. Um, the amount of of uh of um uh resources available for traditional infrastructure appropriations bills. Uh, is gonna be in jeopardy at the federal level. At the state level, it's quite uh predictable. We've seen this every single recession that the state has. Um, following the 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 fiscal situ- situation like this. Um, uh, in the in the first recession, uh, the state imposed all sorts of fees on cities. Uh, in order to have issues, you know, our parking fines heard in courts. We suddenly had to pay court fees and police fees and license fees and a bunch of other things. Our revenues were diverted by the state um to other agencies. Uh, um, and those other agencies' revenues were then diverted to the state. Uh, in the last recession, uh, the state eliminated a billion dollars worth of redevelopment, of which we were one of the top five cities in the entire state. So the 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 second biggest threat after the 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 virus and the shelter orders really is other government agency. And it is absolutely essential that we are prepared for any of those eventualities. Um, and so this is an encouraging forecast on the on the current state of the world. And our, and the best forecast that we can do around the economics of sales taxes and property taxes. But the lessons from every prior fiscal uh uh recession has been that it's not just the direct economic effects. Effects, it's the secondary but enormous effects of changes in the revenue and expenditure structure that are imposed by other levels of government. So. It is going to remain, and and CalPERS is actually just one example of that and it's one we know of. Because we've been through this repeatedly, but it's only one. Um, and so as we, as we go toward the thirteenth, I think it's important to 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 re- to emphasize that the work that we have done and that it. That that work puts us in a better position than eighty or ninety percent of all other cities in California. Um, but that's a relative, um, you know, that's a, that's a relative bill of health and we will need to continue to remain. To remain um vigilant around the, around both revenues and spending. And just for some real talk uh about about our our budget. Um, you know, we've had discussions here and, you know, you cannot come to council and propose. To pay everybody's rent, to support everybody's nonprofit organization. Uh, to to spend money in all eight weeks of the emergency and then uh demand that everybody else exercise fiscal discipline. Uh, there's a reason why from the outset of this emergency, exactly. Though that fiscal approach that has put us in this position over the last several years, as the manager and the whole council has just remarked on. Why we have been um employing some set of discipline around our expenditures to this point because of exactly this crisis. Uh, so it just is the the, we are not in a position to be able to act as a big grant agency. We're not, we are not the uh the funder of every possible uh need and program in the community, no matter how much we might believe in it. Because our core responsibility is to protect public safety and to protect clean water and to protect, make sure that parts don't have needles in them. We have our job to do, um, and we have done it. We always have in West Sacramento. And it's why this is, this, you know, um, laser-like focus on fiscal responsibility and fiscal making, making fiscally prudent resp- uh decisions. Has been essential and we're gonna have to continue to do that, um, as I think every member of the council, um, has has said both tonight and previously. So. Thanks for the report. I'm really, I'm 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 dreading and looking forward to the thirteenth. Because those are gonna be some challenging decisions to start to 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 think through and choices to be raising in the community. Um, and also with our own organization and our own staff, um, but they won't get any easier. Uh, and it's why, uh, you know, why we've been, why we've been pushing and why our staff has been supportive of taking, taking actions and being comprehensive about this in the first place. Just as we did in the last recession when both Mr. Laurel and Mr. Ledesma um and others worked on the on the redevelopment succession plan. That put us in almost a better position than we were when we started, but that's because uh we got ahead of that crisis and immediately started planning before anybody else. For how to not just survive, but also to thrive afterwards. And so uh the thirteenth uh is the beginning of the opportunity for us to engage in that in a very. Real way. Alright, so thanks, Mr. City Manager. Uh, so we're gonna proceed then to uh the um uh council calendar. Ms. Berlin?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, not too much on the calendar coming up. One item um of an update, I think, to the calendar in your packet is the. Um, T M I mission meeting scheduled for May fourth. Um, it will be canceled. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And just for the council, the uh, the mayor, Protem and I are are going to be convening uh soon, a meeting of the chairs of the commissions and the. And the vice chairs of the commissions, uh, just for a briefing on on status. This is an annual event that we do in person. Uh, but because the commission meetings have all been on pause due to the emergency, we felt that it was important to proceed so so that uh. The the citizen volunteer leaders of our community, um, who are so important to to our democratic process and also have a lot to to offer in terms of policy change. Uh, and and communication are brought, are are fully briefed and also have a chance to provide their feedback about what's going on in the community. So we're gonna. Uh, we will be meeting uh solely with the chairs and the vice chairs. Um, we would typically use this meeting to go over our strategic plan and we'll give some insights into that as well, but of course, the council is aware our strategic plan. Um, may be evolving as a result of this emergency. Right, any questions on the calendar? Uh, city manager reports?
Uh, nothing more tonight. Thank you.
Any questions on the city manager reports? City attorney reports?
I have nothing to report this evening.
And thank you, Mr. City Attorney, staff directors, members of the council. And we have no future agenda item requests, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Right, it's been moved by council member Orozco and seconded by Mayor Protem Sandin that the meeting be adjourned. Uh, Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on motion to adjourn?
Yes, Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
And Mayor Baldwin?
Aye, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and everyone have a, please have a safe night.